Regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission. As Chaplain Philip Snodgrass comes to bring our invocation, let us just pause for a moment of silence for, to remember Paul Wesh and his family in their time of bereavement. Let us stand for our invocation remains standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
May we pray. Dear Heavenly Father, as we come to the end of 2020, we thank you for walking with us through this difficult time. As we face a new year, we pray that you will go before us preparing a way of peace and health. We ask that at the end of 2021, like 2020, we would testify of your goodness towards us. We ask that your blessings rest upon our commissioners and county, and may all who enter here find you and the glory of your kingdom. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the dis bowl of liberty and justice for
Thank you, Chaplain, and Happy New Year's to you. Do we have any speakers?
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, our first speaker is Ms. Angela Gudra.
Pardon me? What's...
Angela.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Good morning.
I hope you all had a wonderful Christmas. I was just coming back to see if I can get any updates on the Grand Farms Road West dirt Is there any...
Do we... Mr. Kegley?
Commissioners, speaking with Jay Ross last week, the title work that he had ordered to make a determination about the ability to acquire the necessary rights away came back in an affirmative, so I believe he is ready to take the next step of generating a quick lane deed to allow the parent property owner to execute. That would allow us to finalize the right-of-way acquisition for Grand Farms Road West. That's where we are currently.
Is there any timeframe of when they may actually start doing the work?
Not currently.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
What happens after, you said they're executing the quick claim deed?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the next step would be?
Starting the bidding of utility relocation. And once utility relocation is complete, the plans are basically done, we'll be able to bid out the construction of the roadway.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's moving along?
So it's a due process. Everything takes a certain amount of time to get through?
It does. Quite frankly, we don't know yet exactly how much time utility relocation would take, but probably six months, something of that nature.
That's always the question mark, because we can't control how fast the utilities move.
Exactly right. Yes.
I had found out that they have the design ready and waiting for the okay from the county for the relocation of the water line. So I was able to find out that. That's why I was wondering what the holdup was.
Well, the title work, and once, now that we have the title searched and we know which parcels need to be cleared, then it's just a matter of working through that and getting the signatures and getting them properly recorded and probate courted.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
The next speaker is Ann Foley, Topic Creekside. Good morning.
I'm back again about item number 41. When they approved Creekside Phase One, I came and asked them to require a deceleration lane for that subdivision, and they have started building, but there's no one living in that subdivision at this time. None of the houses are complete yet. But the problem is that there's going to be a serious need for a deceleration lane. Well, I understand now that they're doing Phase Two for 45 additional units. You know, that's all great. I'm excited about it. It makes my property on Bourne Road more valuable. I am thrilled. But seriously, this needs to be done safely, and there needs to be a deceleration lane. And I'm told that they've done a traffic study. Well, I don't know what you're going to find in a traffic study when no one has moved into Phase One yet, and you're going to build 45 additional units on top of the ones that haven't even already been completed in Phase One. And I'm asking you to hold this over because it doesn't make sense to me. I mean, it doesn't make a bit of sense, as many accidents as we have in that area and the increased amount of traffic we're going to have, and it's right there at Boykin Park, and there's wrecks there quite frequently, and we really do need that deceleration lane for those people. I probably won't be using this deceleration lane. But my house is the first house they're going to come to when they need a phone, if they don't have a cellphone, to call for help. So seriously, I'm asking you to hold this over, and I'm asking them to reconsider and put a deceleration lane in this plan and move forward, because it's a great development. It's a great thing, but it needs that deceleration lane to handle that traffic that's going to be added, but doesn't exist right now because no one's moved even into Phase One. But by the time we get to Phase Two, it's going to be, uh-oh, it's too late. So I'm just asking you to please hold it over and to have them reconsider that and look into adding that deceleration lane. And Mr. Dewitt is not here, but Jerry Carl, when I came before for Phase One, Jerry Carl said he would require both a traffic study and a deceleration lane because he is very familiar with that area and knows that it is needed, because you're coming over the top of, you've crossed over I-10 on Carroll Plantation Road, and you really, they just really don't have much reaction time. And then there's also coming the other direction, there's a curve there, and it's a, they have frequent wrecks there. So.
Does anyone remember a commitment regarding a deceleration lane?
Yes, Commissioners.
Matthew Barcliffe can address this in particular, but we did sit down with the developer and their engineers at the prior approval of Phase One, and they did perform a traffic study at our request, and the traffic study showed that they would indeed need a turn lane to be installed, but it would not be necessary until Phase Three. That, all the numbers that they crunched showed that it was not necessary up until the development of Phase Three, and that's what we're abiding by with our agreement with the developer.
And they take into consideration the fact that, how much traffic will be added on each phase?
That is correct. That is correct. That's how they have done that, yes.
Matthew, did you have anything to add to that?
No, ma'am, not unless there are any other particular questions. Mr. Kegley summed it up.
Is this something that could be held over until Commissioner Dewitt is here to address, since this is in his district?
I spoke with Commissioner Dewitt earlier this morning, and our brief discussion, he was willing to abide by whatever terms that y'all thought necessary, the two of you. He was willing to move ahead.
So, but what you're saying is that a deceleration or a turn lane would be needed, it's just not needed during the first or second phases of development?
That is correct.
Okay.
But now that's being said before anybody's ever moved into Phase One or Phase Two. That's before the traffic has increased on that road. And I went to Mr. Dewitt's office about 30 minutes ago, and he was not in, and so I wasn't able to talk to him, and that was the first opportunity that I've had to talk with anybody about this, which is why I was asking him to hold it over, because I'd like to talk to him.
So what we're being told is that the traffic study was performed, and it also took into consideration the additional traffic that would come in Phase One and Phase Two, and a determination was made that it would not reach the requisite level for deceleration lane until Phase Three.
That's what you're being told, yes. But I would not agree with that, and I asked for it in Phase One and believed that it would be required in Phase Two. And Jerry Carl, who was familiar with that area, agreed that he believed it was needed also, but he would approve Phase One, and then when they came back for Phase Two, he would require the traffic study and the deceleration lane, because he is very familiar with that area. But now, they did a study.
We, you asked for a traffic study, and that was done, and those were the results that came back from the traffic study and the projection as to when the lane would be needed. Yes, the traffic study determined that a lane would be needed, but only at the third phase.
And I understand what y'all are telling me, but I'm asking you, could you hold this over for at least another week before you vote on this? Would there be a problem with that?
Commissioner, I don't have an issue with holding this over. I mean, you know, I certainly believe our engineer, we've had the conversation with Commissioner Dewitt, but obviously, he's not quite as familiar as Commissioner Carl was with this particular issue, and I think that it would be appropriate, since it's not a terribly time sensitive issue, that we would hold it over.
To our January 11th meeting?
Thank you very much.
There are no other speakers.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hodge?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Number one, approve the claim list.
So moved.
Second?
Number two, hold a public hearing, so any citizen of the county shall be given the opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the state of revenues.
The public hearing is now open. Are there any speakers for or against? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed.
Number three was held at the conference. Number four, approve authorizing, adopting, and submitting the 2019 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Development.
So moved.
Is that the correct name? Isn't it Urban Development? Urban Development. Second?
Number five, approve contract with University of South Alabama in the amount of $12,000 from District One funds to support Project 110, a documentary providing the history of the Coltilda and African Town.
So moved.
Second?
Number six, approve contract with Women's Club of Saraland, Inc., in the amount of $24,002,4642 from District One funds for building repairs and improvements.
So moved.
Second?
Number seven, approve contract with Clark Shaw Magnet School Parent Teachers Association in the amount of $25,000 from District Two funds to purchase technology equipment.
So moved.
Second?
Number eight, approve contract with St. Elmo Elementary School Parent Teacher Organization in the amount of $23,000 from District Three funds for a walkway canopy.
So moved.
Second?
Number nine, approve contract with Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in a total amount of $13,500 to be divided among District One funds from any amount of $3,500, District Two funds, any amount of $5,000, and District Three funds, any amount of $5,000 for the JROTC STEM Leadership Program for the JROTC STEM Leadership Academy.
So moved.
Second?
Number 10, approve contract with Foster &amp; Together Gulf Coast in the amount of $20,000 from District Three funds for operational expenses.
So moved.
Second?
Number 11, approve recommendation to board review for the junk ordinance hearing held December 8, 2020, for citation as follows.
So moved.
Second?
Number 12, approve contract with MTI Business Solutions to provide employee training services for period January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021.
So moved.
Second?
Number 13, approve sponsorships with USS Alabama Battleship Foundation in a total amount of $7,500 to be divided equally among the districts, District One funds $2,500, District Two funds $2,500, and District Three funds $2,500 for its sailors, life at sea, and home front during World War II exhibits.
So moved.
Second?
Number 14, approve contract with Wolf Pack Band Boosters in the amount of $4,159 from District One funds to purchase band equipment for Viger High School.
So moved.
Second?
Number 15, approve professional services agreement for development and support of all of an online election reporting system with Dogwood Productions, Inc., for judge of probate for initial cost of $18,500 plus an annual maintenance and per-election cost.
So moved.
Second?
Number 16, approve professional services agreement for web design, hosting, support, and maintenance with Dogwood Production, Inc., for a new website for the judge of probate for initial cost of $10,000 plus hosting, maintenance, and support costs subject to final legal review.
So moved.
Second?
Number 17, approve notice of termination of web development, hosting, support, and maintenance agreement with Site One On Internet, Inc., effective March 31, 2021, and authorize the judge of probate to sign such notice.
So moved.
Second?
Number 18, approve authorizing advertising for bids project maintenance facilities for Camp One, Two, and Four.
So moved.
Second?
Number 19, approve assigning 800 megahertz radio system salvage and disposal to TeleVate LLC for professional consulting services in the amount of $29,473 for to review existing county radio system assets, identify and classify equipment for sale or salvage disposal, develop specifications and statement of work.
So moved.
Second?
Number 20, approve authorizing minor amendment to the program Year 20 Action Plan to reflect a reduction in allocation of $247 in the Community Development Block Grant and $135 in home program due to an error in the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's initial formula allocations.
So moved.
Second?
21, approve authorizing the President of the Commission to sign and submit amendment SF 424 forms for the Community Development Block Grant and home programs, and to execute the subsequent award agreements and documents associated with this award.
So moved.
Second?
22, approve appointment of Tyrone Ferguson, Jr. to serve on the Board of Directors of the Mobile Museum of Art, Inc., for a term of three years effective January 1, 2021, and will expire December 31, 2024, replacing Mike Johnson.
So moved.
Second?
23, consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved.
Second?
24, approve renewal of maintenance agreement with Converge One, Inc., in the amount of $32,632.01 for a period of three years from January 17, 2021 through January 17, 2024 for Fort Tintin, Fortigate 600D under the current state Alabama contract for the County Commission.
So moved.
Second?
25, approve renewal maintenance agreement with Converge One, Inc., in the amount of $16,839 for the period of one year from December 6, 2020 through December 5, 2021 for production support converged VMware Horizon under the current GSA contract for County Commission.
So moved.
Second?
26, consider approving professional services agreement with Overton Veterinary and PC for veterinarian services at Mobile County Animal Shelter in the amount of $30,000 per year.
So moved.
Second?
27, approve purchase of approximately 5.47 acres of waterfront real property located on Jackson Road, Theodore, Alabama, for a purchase price of $245,000 plus closing costs, and to authorize the Commission President to sign the purchase agreement and other such closing documents.
So moved.
Second?
28, approve authorizing professional services agreement with Trust Care Management doing business as Ozzelia Gardens Nursing Home for on-site nursing home of COVID-positive homeless individuals referred by Mobile County Board of Health at all-inclusive rate of $208.76 per night, per person, but not to exceed $105,000 as approved July 27, 2020, Agenda Item Number 22, subject to final legal review.
So moved.
Second?
Just question, this is, is this reimbursable? CARES? Should be. Should be. Okay, I thought it was.
If it's extended, you know, if we can go past December 31st?
Oh, okay. We don't know yet.
We don't, oh, did he sign?
He signed it.
I think he signed it.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's right.
Okay.
So it should be good, since he signed it. Yeah. Okay.
29, approve authorizing acceptance of grant from Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Bayfront Park Restoration Improvement Project in amount of $4,648,304 with no match required, and authorize the execution of all associated documents subject to final legal review.
So moved.
Second?
Number 30, approve authorizing professional services contract with Knowles Development Group, Inc., in amount of $110,000 CIP 2019 in the amount up to $56,525 in CDP 106-21 in the amount of $53,475 to implement the African Town Winter Initiative, which will enhance the physical and environmental aesthetics of African Town communities, including Magazine Point, Happy Hills, Kelly Hills, and Lewis Quarter.
So moved.
Second?
31, amending the 2019 Capital Improvement Plan to add Project CIP 2019-001N African Town Redevelopment. This amendment creates Project CIP 2019-001N African Town Redevelopment in amount of $56,525 and decreases CIP 2019-001, District One unnamed projects by $56,525.
So moved.
Second?
32, is voted at the conference. 33, approve reappointing Anita Diamond, District One, Karen Atchison, District Two, and George Bach, District Three, to serve as members of the Board of Directors of Mobile Bay Convention and Visitors Bureau for three-year terms expiring December 31, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
34, approve requests for proposals for professional services event connection calendar platform, website, content management.
So moved.
Second?
35, approve purchase of e-ticket equipment for the Sheriff's Office from CW, CDW-G LLC under the current purchasing Cooperative National IPA Technology Solutions contract in the amount of $175,514.50, half of which will be reimbursed by Alabama Administrative Office of Courts, and the balance will be reimbursed through the CARES Act funding.
So moved.
Second?
36, approve recommendation from the Mobile County Investment Committee.
So moved.
Second?
37, recommend authorizing acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deed from the following property owner for the following project.
So moved.
Second?
38, recommend awarding bid for Project McDonald Road, Hosea O. Weaver and Sons, Inc., for their low bid in the amount of $943,040.89.
So moved.
Second?
39, recommend approving final plat of Deer Crest Unit Three subdivision, Bay Wilmer Road South, District Three, authorizing the county engineer to sign the plat and extend Deer Crest Lane in the private road inventory and adding Deer Crest Court to the private road inventory. These streets have been constructed to pay private road standard and certified by developers professional engineer.
So moved.
Second?
Number 40, recommend approving supplemental agreement number one with HCL Contracting LLC for Project Villagim Road for the addition of fencing paid items, thereby increasing the contract in an estimated amount of $7,520.
So moved.
Second?
Number 41, we're going to hold over. We have one add-on, Commissioners. Add-on number one, recommend rejecting bid project CIP-2019-002B Part One, Mobile County Soccer Complex Shade Structure and Bench Installation. Also authorize the re-advertising and rebidding of this project.
So moved.
Second?
42, Commission announcements and/or comments.
You have any announcement?
I just wanted to take the opportunity to offer my deepest condolences to the, to the city of Mobile, to the mayor and his administration, to certainly the family of Paul Wesh, his friends, his colleagues. This is a huge loss for the city. He was such a true gentleman, a professional. He was always so very kind and considerate to work with, and he will certainly be missed. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to ask everyone to please pray for his family and friends and colleagues. And also, this is the last meeting of 2020, and so I want to wish everyone a very safe, healthy, and prosperous and Happy New Year, and hopefully, we will see some light at the end of this pandemic tunnel coming in 2021. We can all certainly hope and pray that that is the case.
And I join Commissioner Hudson in those sentiments. You know, these, this has been, this has been a tough year all around, and some of us have suffered greater losses than others, but I think all of us have felt it. So we just remember each other in prayer and just pray for each other's strength and comfort that we can endure this and approach the coming year with some level of hope. So we have a lot of retirees for January 2021. Louis Carson, 30 years Sheriff's Department. James Carter, 24 years, Roden Bridge. Valerie Evans, 41 years Administration. Andretta Grimes, 21 years Custodial. Tom Hudson, the venerable Tom Hudson, Jr., 10 years, Roden Bridge, Camp 98. William James, 27 years Custodial. Mary F. Kish, 16 years, Mobile County Inspections. Joycey Lomax, 25 years, License Commissioner's Office. Regina Love, 29 years, Investigation and Recovery. Philip Mayo, 22 years, Sheriff's Department. Laurie O'Farrell, 26 years, Sheriff's Department. Robert J. Parker, 26 years, West Mobile Park. Joseph W. Pica, 25 years, Sheriff's Department. Serena Sanders, 23 years, Roden Bridge, Camp 98. David C. Wade, 11 years, Sheriff's Department. We wish them, we best wishes to them. We thank them for their service and...
So we're losing about 300, 400 years of experience, right here at the end of the year. Wow.
Yeah, Roden Bridges and Sheriff's Departments are really taking hits. They're taking major loss of experience and institutional memory. But they've earned their, their time away, and we wish them the best.
We wish them the best. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner, we have an indigent care board after. Number 43, approve request for motion to adjourn until January 11, 2021.
So moved.
Second? And I'd like to call to order the Mobile County Indigent Care Board meeting for December 28, 2020.
Number one, approve the minutes on the meeting of November 30, 2020.
So moved.
Second?
Number two, accept a report from Mobile County Commission of the balance in the indigent care fund at November 30, 2020. Funds available, $160,669.50.
So moved.
Second?
And number three, approve request for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Commissioner.
Stay safe.
I was, I was trying to remember, I've never, but it's been so long, I'm not sure. I would know her if I saw her. I, I was told that his daughter just got married. They had the wedding two weeks ago, something like that.
You just don't know.
He was on, Beth told me, he was about, he was about sixty-six.
I'm wondering.
Yeah.
That sounds kind of like a metal-